Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to the second meeting of the mayor and city council to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. DeWalt?
Here.
Mr. Cole?
Yeah.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
President Smith?
Here.
Mr. Sidnor? Mayor Moe?
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number three, approval of minutes. Approval of minutes will be deferred to the next mayor and city council meeting on Monday, January tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Moving on to agenda item number four, report of the mayor and city council. Councilman DeWalt?
Good evening, everyone. Just a few items. The holiday awards, if nobody knows or aren't aware of the holiday awards that the city gives out. The due date for that is December fifteenth. So if you have have your holiday decorations out before then, you will be considered for award. And if you get an award, it'll be a really nice sign in your front lawn saying that you were you were selected as one of our holiday award winners. You can also nominate your friends or nominate your neighbors if you see a really nice house that you like. And that number to call is three oh one seven seven six eight nine six six. Once again, three oh one seven seven six eight nine six six. On December third, myself and councilman member Mitchell met with some a few members of Tom Bernogas team in reference to some complaints that they had received from the Selborns House. The management company was there. They had two representatives and we tried our best. There was about eight complaints total. They one of their complaints was certain section of the parking lot being quite dark at nighttime. So I actually went over there and there was one of their LED lights out back in the corner, which made it very, very dark. But I did contact BG and this is like the third time in a month I've contacted BG and I've gotten absolutely great service and a great response from them. And even the the call taker assured me that the once she talked to a supervisor, because it was a senior home, he would send somebody out there to look at it. And I got a text at three forty-three in the morning saying the light was fixed. And I went down the next evening and sure enough, it was fixed and it lit it up pretty nice. So I think that that problem is resolved. The only other issue that I I I still have a hard time believing that there's only one elevator in that building. And and you know how when you have an elevator that goes down, it's normally three, four, five, six days unless you're going to pay that elevator company a lot of money to get that elevator fixed. So I just I just can't believe there was when that thing was built that they only put in one elevator. That same evening, I volunteered at the American Legion Post sixty at their bingo night. The next day I was with Laurel for the production at the Roland B. Schweitzer Park. And if you have a chance, ride by there and we were working on a pollinator garden. It's very pretty. And I can't wait till springtime when everything comes up and all the plans come up there. One reminder tomorrow, Katz is having a fundraiser at Lito's Pizza. It's from eleven AM to nine nine PM. And they're also going to have their annual sidewalk sale, which is they sell a lot of litter boxes, cat cat boxes, the carrying cases for the cats, a lot of different things for your cats at very discounted prices, just as a fundraiser. And then next week, next Monday on December twentieth, we're going to have a legal and liability risk management institute seminar. And it's going to be streamed into council chambers from one PM to three PM. And it's first responders and interacting with individuals with mental illness. And I know this is from reading all the things about police reform and different things that police can institute. This is a very, very hot item as far as as far as the police departments across the nation go. And I thought it would just be interesting to listen to somebody and their their issues and what goes on as far as interacting with individual first responders and interacting with individuals with mental illness. And that's that's about it. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Councilman Sidnor?
Thank you, everybody. Mr. President. I attended a fundraiser with the One Hundred Black Men of Prince George County on December eighth. I'm also a member of that organization. Fundraisers raise the money for mental health in Prince George County. Also, I attended another fundraiser on December eleventh, Purpose for Giving a Living Organization. They gave us eighty turkeys. We split it between the Selborns House and Royal Lakes Apartment. I just went by there to thank them in person, you know, represent them, let them know that things they know, I greatly appreciate that. And also, on also Saturday, December eleventh, I attended First Baptist Church of Laurel. They had a Merry Christmas of Laurel. It was a outstanding event. They had pony rides out there. They had a photo studio. You can take Christmas pictures. They had gifts for the kids. They can make gifts and then they wrap them up and give them to their parents. They had cookies, hot chocolate, they had a story of Born in Jesus Christ. It was an awesome event. Everything was free. So First Baptist Church, I'm going to gradually pass the Brent Brewer and his congregation and staff for putting on that event like that. That was a outstanding event. I didn't know they'd been doing that. He's said he's been doing it ever since he's been pastor of the church. So I encourage you to go out there next year. They do it next year. And also, I want to congratulate the United States Navy. We won a football game Saturday. We beat the Army for the first time in a couple of years. But what's so important about that is that some of my shipmates, I was stationed with Annapolis. We drove to Annapolis together over ten years. We used to go up to Annapolis and watch the game, but they decided to come to Laurel and support a local business in Laurel, so we went to BJ's. And it was ten of us there and about ten of us has two hundred and thirteen years of military service, retired members and some still active and reserve. So I thought that was a nice gesture to honor me as a councilman inside the city, support me and come watch the game at BJ's, a local restaurant. So go Navy, beat Army again. To my importance, President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. Councilman Cole?
Evening, everyone. I'll try to keep my report brief. On November the twenty-fourth, I was with Councilman Sidnor and we were handing out ARPA checks to Saint Mary's of the Mill Church in Knights of Columbus. On the third of December, I attended the open house at the Laurel Museum. On December fourth, I attended breakfast with Santa. Parks and Rec did an amazing job making sure that all the families were able to have an individually boxed breakfast before spending time with Santa to tell everyone their wishes and pictures. And then on the evening of the fourth, we attended the pre-lighting ceremony. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Cole. Councilman Mitchell? Councilman Mitchell?
Yes. Hey, thank you, President. So as Carl said, we had a great meeting with Selborn Management. And, you know, still a lot of issues to resolve, but I think we have a good working relationship. And the next event on Saturday, I stopped by the the coaching clinic at the Laurel Branch Library. Maryland Legal Aid was hosting the clinic and Macy's donated five hundred, five hundred children to adult coat. So that seemed like a very great event and they were also giving legal advice as well as giving away coats. And later that day, I was able to stop by the craft fair at the Legion. They had about like fifty-seven different vendors from like Baltimore to DC. And 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 there was definitely a lot of local Laurel vendors. And other than that, we had a successful food drive on Saturday. So we gave a lot of donations to Elizabeth House. And I definitely want to thank our people that put up food boxes, giant elevation station, True Wellness, and Rise Up Nutrition. And yep, that's all I got. Brances, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. Mayor Moe?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things. Did I have to attend the Laurel Board of Trade their annual meeting and give remarks and your annual report as well as on December the eighth, there was a LGBTQ discrimination coalition, which is mayors from around the country had a briefing on that. The December the eighteenth for announcements at eleven AM will have the Reefs Across America ceremony at the Laurel Municipal Center. It'll be outside this year. Be short program and then everyone will walk over from there to Ivy Hill and place reefs. So I want to thank the volunteers, the city staff and and all of those that helped put this together. Hopefully it'll be some nice weather. It is, it looks like could be a little rain, but either way, it'll be outside and we'll make sure it gets done and honor those that need to be honored. The Laurel Volunteer Friday Department Laurel Rescue Squad again are doing their fill the truck. I think this weekend is the last day for that. If you are interested, just contact either department. They'll be able to give you that information or on their website as well. The city will be closed in observation of Christmas Day on December the twenty-fourth and on December the thirty-first. The city offices will be closed for New Year's Day. So trash and and your recycling composting and all, please just check our website for updated information on that. Just a little bit more on the Reefs Across America that will be held Saturday, December the eighteenth, as I said, at eleven AM. The event will be held out in front of the municipal center. Beginning, there'll be a brief ceremony followed by reefs carried over to Ivy Hill Cemetery and placed on veterans' graves. Please note, the event will be held entirely outdoors. We all, so please dress appropriately for what the weather may be and bring an umbrella if need to be. Due to the ongoing pandemic, attendees are strongly encouraged to wear a face mask covering their nose and mouth for the event. The Saturday at eleven o'clock and again until on December the eighteenth at the Laurel High School Food for Thought will be there handing out food as well. Usually attend that, like Councilman Sidnor and now Council President have attended it several times that they've been in the area. We've hopefully be able to get there after the Reefs Across America, but it'll be a little difficult, but I think they've got quite a few volunteers. I just want to offer prayers to the victims of deadly tornadoes that happened in Kentucky, Missouri, Illinois, Arkansas, a couple others. Had a couple phone calls, talked to Scott Hancock, the MML Director today. I'm going to do some follow-up. You know, we helped Laurel, Mississippi years ago and they had devastation and maybe there is a a city or a town that we may might we may want to try to adopt and see if we can help, but I'll keep the community and the council up to date as we move forward. Plus, you need to have what they call EMAC, needs to be transmitted for help. And, you know, we need to make sure that we're following all the rules or regulations if we were to do something. So again, I think there's a lot that needs to be done there and it's something that's going to take months to take care of. And if we can help, we'll try to do that. I want to remind residents and those visitors that are coming into the city. We want to remind you to slow down. There's a lot of people out and about, especially kids. And we are still dealing with those that want to speed from one stop sign to the other and in some cases don't even stop at the stop sign. So we encourage you to please remind everyone to slow down. Tomorrow night, I'll be attending, I think, with the council president, stake in to the Prince George County Municipal Association Legislative Meet and Greet. They are working to keep it small. They're asked that municipalities send only two representatives from each town. It'll be an opportunity for us to talk about Prince George County Municipal Association's legislative agenda as well as the state MML's agenda to our state and county officials. Want to remind everyone, the American Rescue Plan Act funding is will be opening to businesses on the sixth of January. There's a lot of information on our website. The funding has started to go out. It's helping individuals within the city. You can go to the website, see where the money is being given to and what the programs are for. And there's information on there if you have questions. So we are working on other applications now. We meet every Monday morning. And again, I think and want to thank the council for all their work and making sure that this fund, these funds get out to the public to help those in need. I do want to congratulate the Laurel Stallions. They're the seven and under football team. They won the American Football National Championship in Florida. They remain undefeated for the season and I look forward to being able to honor them sometime after the first of the year. But again, congratulations to them. Last, I want to acknowledge we are moving, as we have said before, to become a designated B city. Michelle Blair is working on that for us. I want to thank her work on that and as we continue to move forward with that designation. And again, I want to, this being our last meeting of the year, want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. Whatever you celebrate throughout this season, we wish it the best and everyone, please be safe and have a great new year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go last. Last week, I attended the WTS International Holiday Party. They're an organization that focused on the advancement of women in transportation. I also attended the fundraiser for the Hundred Black Men of Prince George's County, where, of course, in attendance was Councilman Sidnor. It was a well-attended event as well. Lastly, I attended this past Saturday, the Life House Community Community Pantry Church, sorry, Life House Community Church Pantries Anniversary. It was a well-attended event. Our former council, Councilwoman Nichols, Nichols was the keynote speaker and she did a wonderful job talking on the points of the need for pantries in our community here and the wonderful job they're doing. Of course, we all know she does a great job here in the city as well. And lastly, I have a toy drive myself. I am hosting in partnership with Brazen, Amazon, Tea, Thomas and Winter, and Fresh Green from Laurel. And the toys we collect will go to children in the hospitals here in Prince George's County. So if you'd like to donate, please contact me. You can reach out the last the last day to do that is December eighteenth, this Saturday. So if you'd like to take part in that, just reach out to me and we'll get that taken care of. concludes my report. All right, moving on to the number agenda, number six, general public hearing. Due to COVID nineteen pandemic, City of Laurel will be holding virtual meetings. The public is asked to submit written testimony on agenda items to the Laurel City Clerk at K R A U at laurel dot M D dot U S by two PM on meeting dates. Ms. Raw, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Mr. President, there's nobody signed up to speak.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll open the public hearing at six nineteen PM and I'll close the public hearing at six nineteen PM. Moving on to agenda item number seven, letter A. Agenda item seven, a contract extension for FC McCollum Consulting LLC. Derek to Cornwell, Cornwell, sorry, you have the floor.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. President, Mayor and City Council Members. Before you, as a memo dated November the twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, recommending the approval of a contract renewal with the FC McCollum Consulting LLC. FC McCollum Consulting provides us services related to floodplain management and the city's community rating system, which is known as the CRS. The CRS is a voluntary incentive program that recognizes and encourages community floodplain management practices and exceeds the minimum requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. The original contract with this consultant was approved by the mayor and the city council on July eighth, twenty twenty nineteen. The cost of this service will not exceed fifty thousand dollars and funding is available through the FY twenty twenty-two CIP budget. If approved, this contract will be effective from November twenty twenty-two of twenty twenty-one till November twenty-one of twenty twenty-two. I respectfully request that the council approves this new contract to continue these services and I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Derek to Cornwell. Any questions from the council? And have a motion to approve.
President, I make a motion to approve the contract extension for FC McCollum Consulting LLC.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
My apologies, Councilmember Sidnor was the one that made the motion. I should have called him first. Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. President, the motion carried.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to agenda item, letter B. Fleet Acquisition Infrastructure Restoration and Emergency Response Equipment, Department of Public Works. Director Brian Lee, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mayor Moe and council members. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval for the purchase of roadway infrastructure restoration and emergency response equipment to replace various items at the end of their useful life cycle. These items are critical to daily projects and core to public works operations. Prior to the acceptance of the bid package, the department solicited quotes from four vendors. The quotes from Safeware and Patriot Contractors did not include quotes for all the requested equipment. The quote from Diamond Core Drilling was one hundred and ten thousand seven, seven hundred and forty dollars. The accepted quote of one hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars from Washington Air Compressor Rental Company of Hyattsville, Maryland is for a complete quote list and is a vendor on the Sourcewell contract, number number zero four one seven one nine. The following equipment is scheduled to be replaced and upgraded. Ingersoll Rand Roller Number Forty will be retired and replaced with DynaPack Roller CC twelve hundred. Ingersoll Rand Air Compression Number Eighty-six will be retired and replaced with a Dawson Air Compressor Model P one eighty-five. Arrowboard sixty-seven and eighty-five will be retired and replaced with two Solotech Arrowboards. Message Boards four oh three will be retired and replaced with the Wonko Full Matrix Solar Message Board. Dawson Light Tower forty-five and forty-six will be retired and replaced with two new Dawson Light Towers. Funding is provided in the FY twenty-two CIP reauthorization, which includes fleet equipment acquisition. The total net cost after deductions for various equipment and residual trade value is one hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. It is recommended that the purchase of this equipment be approved in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars to Washington Air Compressor Rental Company. And I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Director Lee. Any questions from the council? I can have a motion to approve?
President, make a motion to approve. Everything that Director Lee read in the record for the big acquisition, infrastructure restoration and emergency response equipment for public works and apartment to pop, yeah.
Hey, can I have a second?
Mr. President, I'll second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Sorry, please call for a vote.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes. Right, moving on to agenda item, letter C. Fleet Acquisition John Deere Tractor Model one four zero five two M, Department of Public Works, Director Lee, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor Moe and council members, the Department of Public Works is requesting approval for the purchase of the John Deere Utility Tractor to replace vehicle number ninety-eight, a two thousand and four tractor in the fleet, which is currently being used by the Department of Parks and Recreation and has exceeded its useful lifespan. The department solicited several quotes, including from vendors on state and county contracts. The accepted quote is from Finch Turf Incorporated of Eldersburg, Maryland, which is a vendor on the Sourcewell Browns Maintenance Contract zero three one one two one, which services local and municipal governments. The quotes were as follows. Finch Turf, Eldersburg, Maryland, thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and nine cents. Revel's Turf and Tractor, multiple locations out of state, forty thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. And Atlantic Tractor, Edgewater, Maryland, sixty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Funding is included in the FY twenty twenty-two CIP reauthorized funds. The net cost for the tractor after the discount is subtracted for the residual trade in value will be thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and nine cents. It is recommended that the purchase of this equipment be approved, be approved in the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and nine cents to Finch Turf of Eldersburg, Maryland, for the purchase of the John Deere Tractor. And I'm here if you have any more questions, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion that we approve the aforementioned John Deere Tractor.
Can I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. President.
Bro, Madam Raw, please call for a roll.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
President Smith?
Right, moving on to agenda item D. Fiber Construction, Main Street Pool and Laurel Museum, Department of Information Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is a Department of Information Technology Fiber Construction Project. This project will provide city private fiber to the Main Street Pool and the Laurel Museum. This product is especially important for the Laurel Museum because it will allow us to provide them with city technology services. The procurement vehicle for this project will be the State of Maryland Consulting and Technical Services Contract. The vendor is Eastcom Limited of Upper Marlboro, Maryland. Eastcom is a master contractor on the cable and wiring outside plant master contract, BPO zero six zero B six four zero zero four six. Total cost of the project is fifty-two thousand dollars, excuse me, fifty-two thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. Funding is available in my current CIP project, twelve A FY twenty-one G. Staff recommends you approve the State of Maryland procurement contract to Eastcom Limited of Upper Marlboro for the purchase price of fifty-two thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. with a purchase price of fifty-two thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-one cents.
All right. Thank you, Eric DeFros. Um, any questions from the council? May, can I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve Fiber Construction and Main Street Pool of Laurel Museum or Department of Information Technology.
Can I have a second?
I'd second it.
Madam, Madam Clerk, please call for roll.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes. All right, moving on to a gen, agenda item number eight, legislation. This is a introduction in first public hearing on ordinance number nineteen ninety-one, text amendment two sixty-one. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland to amend the Unified Land Development Code, Chapter twenty, land development and subdivision regulations. To update the department title, update the mixed-use transportation-oriented zone, planned unit development existing zone and create public art guidelines in sections listed and providing for an effective date. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. Director Love, you have the floor.
Thank you and, uh, good evening, Mr. President, Mayor and City Council Members. Uh, as was mentioned, this is ordinance nineteen ninety-one. Um, uh, update or to amend the Laurel City Code, Chapter twenty. And we can update the department title, update the mixed-use transportation-oriented zone, planning and development existing and create public art guidelines in the sections listed. The, uh, only information I want to update council from the work session is that in looking at section twenty dash twenty-eight dot six art in public places, it wasn't as clear as we intended that the criteria for the review listed, uh, will apply to new art pieces on existing developed property, property as well as the newer development projects. So staff is working with the city solicitor right now to add that language to this update. Um, it'll be in more in line with the vision that we had for that section. Uh, we should have that here in the next couple of days. So it will be distributed to council and available for the public well ahead of the second public hearing. But other than that, there are no changes from the work session presentation. Thank you, Mr. President.
You, Derek Love? Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Mr. President, there's nobody signed up to speak on this item.
All right, I will open the public hearing at six thirty-one PM. Now we'll close the public hearing at six thirty-one PM. The second public hearing with possible action at the mayor and city council meeting will take place on Monday, January tenth, uh, two thousand twenty-two. The mayor, uh, the mayor and city council meeting is scheduled for Monday, December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one is canceled. There will be no further business to come before the mayor and city council tonight. This meeting is adjourned.